Welcome everyone to the Westwood Planning Board. It is 7:06, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
By the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Westwood Planning Board meeting. My name is Brian Gorman and I will be chairing the meeting. The meeting is video recorded by Westwood Media Center. If anyone else wishes to record the meeting, please identify yourself so the audience is aware, seeing none. As a friendly reminder, please turn off your cellphone ringers. The meeting will be civil and all people will be treated respectfully. The format of the meeting will be when an item is called, the applicant will come forward to the podium to present their application to the board. The board will proceed to staff comments. The board members will ask questions to the applicant. For public hearing items, the public will be given an opportunity to comment. Items that are not a public hearing, the opportunity for public comment will be at the discretion of the board. When it is time for the public comment period, the chair will call those wishing to speak to the podium. To use the microphone, once at the podium, please identify yourself and state your name and address for the record. Please direct all comments and questions through the chair. All people will be given the opportunity to speak, but in the interest of time and fairness, repetitive or off-topic comments may be cut short. Abby, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes.
Great, no changes to the agenda. So first item on the agenda is 10 Longwood Drive, Fox Hill Village, EIDR, public hearing. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Johanna Schneider. I'm an attorney at Hemingway &amp; Barnes and I'm here on behalf of Fox Hill Village. I'll just take this opportunity first to introduce the Fox Hill team who's here with us tonight. We have Tony Amico, who is the Managing Director at Fox Hill. We have Dan Coley from Perkins Eastman, the project architect. And we have Charlie Shepherd from CDW, our site civil engineer. We also have President Rich Simmons, who's the owner's rep, and Heather Switzke, who is general counsel for Fox Hill. We're here tonight on an application for an EIDR special permit for a modest expansion of the existing Fox Hill residential retirement community. I do want to note that we also will be seeking CONCOM approval and a modification of the existing special permit pursuant to which the development was originally developed. We do have a presentation that we're going to walk through. Each person on the team's got a little part they're going to do, but basically it's going to be an overview of the existing Fox Hill facility, a description of the proposed project, and then if the board would like, we can walk through the project's compliance with each of the EIDR permit conditions. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tony to present the project.
Thank you, Johanna. I'm Tony Amico, Managing Director, Fox Hill Village. As you can see up in the screen, our mission, Fox Hill Village, is committed to providing its residents with services and amenities to promote full and meaningful life, living. The commitment includes providing care and support to residents as they age through the end of life. So just a brief history, we opened in 1990 as a continued care community, 356 independent living units, 70 skilled nursing home beds at Clark House, which is owned by Mass General Hospital and a nursing home operator. Nationally, health care for the elderly has seen significant evolution over the past 20 years. You've seen a big shift. Elders want to stay home in their home setting. You've seen a big growth in assisted living alternatives. You've seen that in our own neighborhood here with Epic and University Station, and you've got a Vida and Needham, and Wingate and Needham as well. So there's a lot of growth in assisted living alternatives. Reduction in the length of staying nursing homes and the need of dementia patients addressed in special units. Again, I'll refer to those communities I just mentioned that were constructed recently that housed mostly residents needing memory support in an assisted living setting. So how Fox Hill Village was adapted, residents have combined units through the years and we've reduced, seen a reduction in our overall number down to 336. We opened White Oak cottages in 2012 for residents that are in need of dementia cognitive support. Then opened in 2012 on our site, it's two 12-room houses with a separate administrative building. And then we, within our own community, we've developed an assisted care program that offers our residents 10 hours of care in their units throughout the day. And in addition, you can support assisted living with some private care. So many of our residents have chose to remain in their units with assisted care as well as some additional private care. We've seen that Clark House saw a big decline in their occupancy. Fox Hill Village residents only occupied 10% of the 70 beds that were at Clark House. The length of stay decreased to 17 days in the nursing home. And Mass General and the nursing home operator decided to close that nursing home in 2018. And at that time, we had, when the building shut down, we had only six residents that were in that nursing home. So the model today is our residents who need skilled nursing do go to nearby nursing homes. We have a great relationship with the two or three nursing homes close by that our residents can go there for short-term stay, which is mostly three weeks. There are residents that stay within our community with continuing care needs, but going forward with the void of the nursing home, we want to continue to build more of a home-like setting and construct 24 assisted living units that would be attached to our main building that will fill the void with Clark House closure. So the new many, let's see, did I jump? So we're 24 bed assisted living residents. The proposed new project has 24 bed assisted living residents, expanded health clinic. Currently, our health center is in need of expansion. It's occupied right now by Brigham Women's Hospital. They'll continue to be in the new building with expanded space. New fitness center and an aerobics room, two separate areas, again, a good expansion from what we have. A physical and occupational therapy clinic, right now it's operated by Connections Physical Therapy, who also operate an office here in Westwood. They will continue to operate their services in the new building. Additional classroom space for lifelong learning. Indoor swimming pool that will provide additional exercise programs for our residents. A new casual bistro, residents that live in our community now, we have three residents, this will be a fourth resident, and there's more interest and more need for more casual dining, so we'll be adding another casual outlet into this new space. And then we currently have a men's and hair salon in our main building that will go into expanded space in that first floor as well.
Good evening. Just a couple of fast facts about the project that we're proposing. The existing Clark House is a 41,100 square foot building over three floors. It houses 70 beds and 45 units. It's two stories and about 20, it's 29 foot eight above finished grade, and currently there are, the parking support is 14 spots with five accessible parkings, so 19 total. Our proposed building is 52,695 square feet. That's 24 units of assisted living. It's three stories above grade with a total height of 46 foot seven. Just as a note, the adjacent Baker wing, which you see on the left side of that drawing, the total height of that building is 57 foot five, so it is smaller than the existing facility is now, but it's taller than the Clark Houses. Parking, there's 13 spots with, or yeah, 13 spots with six accessible. So really what we've done is we've kind of flipped to have an extra accessible spot to make sure that we have enough support for the access board regulations. And there's a very slight increase in impervious area to 2,240 square feet, which is over the size of the existing footprint of the Clark House. This is just kind of a bird's eye overview of where the Clark House is, what building that we're looking to demolish. The next slide shows the proposed amenity wing going in the same location with no changes to the roadways around it, loading dock in the same location, and entryway, although adjusted, still in the same location as it is now.
This first plan is actually, well, it's a landscape plan we've used to, we're going to combine it to be the layout materials plan. You can see on the left side, the existing, that edge of the parking, I believe there's 10 spaces there, that's going to be the limit of our work, so we're going to start there. New sidewalks there. You can see the new larger island from what's there now. And then parking to the right there, another three spaces, three handicapped, one with van accessible, which is new, they didn't have that before. Then we've got sidewalks to the right side, to the patio for the pool area. And then you can see the service road down the right side. Currently, it's about 23 feet, we're going to reduce it down to 20. We're going to hold the right side, no disturbance on the wetland side. That will get repaved, but not regraded, it'll stay the same grade. And then out back, you can see we have the loading dock, we have two trash compactors next to the dock, and then one space for the loading dock area. We have the front, you can see the front entrance with concrete there. We're actually proposing pavers in the front, for a portion of the front, and then for some of the back that we're going to use for stormwater storage. So again, 13 spaces, six handicapped with one van accessible. This is our grading and drainage plan. We've proposed, we've been asked to, the design is to capture one inch of rainfall from the roof of the new addition and the new impervious area, so what we've proposed is a rain garden in the front larger island, which will capture basically the right side of the parking lot. There's a ridge line right near the front entrance, so everything to the right will come down to an existing catch basin, drain into the rain garden. And then we're also going to capture the front half of the roof will come out, roof leaders will come off the building, the, I believe it's an eight-inch PVC pipe, it'll be perforated under the pavers, and then when it gets to the pavement, it'll be solid again, so that will drain to the rain garden. So you'll get the catch basin and the roof drainage into that rain garden, which will then overflow to a new drain manhole and tie into the existing system and come across the street into the existing head wall. In the back, we've taken a new trench drain. There's a trench drain now that's, I think it's a four-inch trench drain. It doesn't work very well, that area floods quite a bit. And right now it drains to a existing catch basin that's out on the fire lane. It's a shallow, it's about 30 inches deep. It fills up pretty fast, doesn't work that well. So we've proposed a new trench drain, a 12-inch trench drain, and we're going to tie that into a second rain garden right behind the building, tucked in behind the building, between the building and the fire lane. So it'll collect from the trench drain, it'll go to a catch basin, which will have a hood on it to capture gas and oil, any spill. And then it goes to the rain garden, and then it will go out to, across the street to what's called a level spreader, an area to, you know, pretty much, it'll store a little bit more, and then there's a stone wear at the end, and it'll bleed out there as an overflow. And then we have a second roof drain from the back of the building that'll come out in the back, under the, behind, underneath the patio, same thing, it'll be perforated pipe under the patio. It'll come to a cleanout at the end, then it'll go to solid pipe, and then into that back portion. So that pretty much takes care, again, we expect improvements. Right now, when it gets, they have a lot of problems at the back because that trench drain can't keep up. And that catch basin, the existing catch basin in the fire lane is just too shallow, so we proposed a new catch basin with a full four-foot sump, so they should get better Go to the next one. I missed one. Sorry. Can you go back one? Maybe I was looking at the... As far as our utility plan, the only new utilities are in the back. We have a new, we're going to tap in off the existing water line in the back behind the loading dock and come behind the addition with a new eight-inch line that's going to tie into the existing building in the back for a new fire pump room. And at the same time, the fire department's requested a new hydrant, so we're putting a hydrant out behind the building adjacent to the fire lane. And then the second utility is just an underground electric line coming from the existing generator out back that's going to come pretty much parallel to the water line and come into the existing building in the back.
So this is the basement level, and it's about 11,000 square feet, and we'll have resident storage in that area, another kitchen storage area, pastry prep area, maintenance, building maintenance storage, new staff lounge for the employees, as well as some additional maintenance offices all on that first, on the basement level, about 11,000 square feet. This is the first floor amenity floor. That as you enter from our existing building, you'll have a meeting room and a second classroom, and then you'll continue down the corridor to a new lounge and bistro with an outdoor terraced during the summer months. In the top of that photo there, you've got a new aerobics room, as well as a fitness center with several machines and equipment, an office of physical therapy and occupational therapy. As you go to the front, you have the new indoor pool. And to the far right, you've got a hair salon and spa. And we will have a clinic right in the center, which is right next to the main entrance to the building. So that floor is about 16,000 square feet. And now if you go to the second floor, in the third floor, which is identical, you have two neighborhoods of 12 suites per floor, with the center of it being more of the common space, the living, the dining area, den, and the elders and residents that live in this floor, there's 12 separate suites, almost 450 square feet for each suite, separate bedroom and living area with bathrooms. So it's pretty much identical, if you've been into our White Oak cottages, it's a pretty much identical model. And the third floor will be identical to the second floor. Again, assisted living, certified, licensed, and ready to care for our residents as well as any residents in Westwood and the neighboring towns that would be welcome to come into this assisted living, again, replacing our skilled nursing. It's a better option of care for our residents and elders to go into this setting, more of a home-like setting, non-institutional, with skilled services available to come into that facility at additional cost.
So we're just going to go through the elevations of the building. The materials are a little different than the existing building, and there's a slide that shows the materials, and there's also the materials board there. And one of the reasons is construction has changed since this building was built. This building is a concrete masonry unit back up with an EFS system, and we're proposing a high-performance envelope here that is different than that in a rain screen. But we're trying to be mindful of the building adjacent and make them both harmonious together. So this is the elevation, we'd see driving up through that new, around that new rain garden in the front of the building with the pool on the right side there. You go to the next one. This is a close-up of that pool elevation and the canopy over the main entrance way to the new facility. These are, you can see there's little key plans there that show which elevation these are. There's the west elevation and the north elevation here. That kind of white block is the, is actually a cut through the building, so we're looking at the east and the south elevation. And there's a copy of the materials board, and if you want me to bring that up closer so people can actually really see it, or do you want to look at it later? Really what we're, the, there are three colors in the middle, there are the existing colors that are on the EFS system now. There's three colors there, and the base of the building is precast in brick. We're proposing to use the same brick at the base, the same mortar and the mixture of the darker brick and the red brick. Our facade materials are going to be similar in color or the same in color to the existing building. And the windows and roofing, the metal windows and roofing, also trying to be harmonious with the existing building. A little bit about sustainability. We looked at, one of the things that we looked at here was to focus on the regional priority credits for the community. The first one is to optimize energy performance. Our building performance here is going to exceed the Massachusetts Energy Code by 33.5%. We're doing that with a high R-value wall and high R-value roof. The other thing that we're going to be looking at in this building is air infiltration around doors and windows, trying to make that as minimal as possible. This is one of the things that we tend, we like to do, is make the best possible envelope for a building before we get to layering on any of the other potential renewables or any other sources of energy. You want to make it tight, as tight a building as you possibly can. Stormwater management is also a regional priority credit. We're using low-impact design. As Charlie mentioned earlier, there's several rain gardens out in the, we're using those to capture the overflow. Indoor water use reduction, we calculated the existing Clark House use, we're saving 79% over the existing Clark House fixtures, and 56%, or 54% over what a baseline fixtures for, under lead V4 would be. We're also doing enhanced building commissioning. We're going to, we typically, our firm does envelope commissioning, we want to make sure that when the building gets built, the envelope performs as expected and is sealed and built properly. And we're focusing heavily on indoor air quality by using low, all low-emitting, low-VOC materials, paints, adhesives, coatings. Post-construction, we're going to, we flush out the building prior to occupancy fully. And during construction, indoor air quality plan, because this is, although the building is separate, it is attached to the existing building, so we have to be very mindful of the air quality during the construction process. And demolition and waste management, recycling, and making sure that 90% or more of any of the materials that we use or demolish or try to remove from the site end up back in the recycling stream. That little circle there is the actual, the energy use intensity for the building, which is about 50.1. That scale measures the energy use per square foot for a build, it's kind of a measure, you can measure any building against any other building with that. Most, these kinds of buildings would end up in the range of about 79. A good building benchmark for this would be about 70, so 50.1 is a pretty good score for where we're at right now. So open for questions.
Well, hold on for questions, so you guys complete at this point?
Yes. Unless you want us to go through the EIDR, we have those slides. Would you like us to go through point by point on the?
The impact statement?
EIDR, or would you like to?
I think you can handle that.
This is just a quick overview of these standards. Preservation of landscape, first one. We're taking down, I believe we're taking down about 22 trees that have to come down because of the building demolition, 23. But we're putting up about 75 new trees, so. Changed since my report. As far as proposed grades, the grades are going to stay about the same. We're pretty close to the same thing. We're going to meet front entrance the same, the service drive out back is going to be about the same, so we're going to repave that service road, but we're going to keep the same grades. So that should stay the same. About the next one. Relations of building to environment. The new building is slightly larger, I believe about 6% maybe, larger than the other one. So as far as scale, you know, the scale will stay the same, you know, once it's in place, it'll fit right into that environment. Open space, we've got, you know, the larger landscaped area in the front, and I think we have more landscaping on the side coming down the service road, so I think we've improved the open space, made it, you know, made it more pleasing to the eye as you come, as you come into the front entrance. Circulation, we've improved circulation, I believe the existing parking lot, I don't think it's 24 feet wide for the aisles, so we've made that 24 feet around, so it's better for parking, better for emergency vehicles. We've got the drop-off area in the front for residents and visitors. Is there going to be a bike wreck? Is that in there, we getting a bike wreck? No, okay. Okay. Onto stormwater, drainage and erosion control. Again, we're using low-impact means to capture the runoff with the rain gardens, two rain gardens and the two porous paver areas. And then again, we will have erosion control set up for the construction period on the right side of the service drive, that's the wetland side, to protect the wetlands from Advertising features, I believe this, is there a new sign on the building, but nothing? Not even, just on the building, so nothing, no new signage outside. No newer advertising. As far as special features, oh, this is a different order, isn't it? Special features, we've got the loading dock in the back, you know, there's an existing dock there now. We'll have a new loading dock, and we'll have two trash compactors again in the back, right off the loading dock, so the workers can come right off the dock and fill the As far as safety, again, we talked about accessibility to emergency vehicles is better, and then I think as far as the sidewalks for the residents, it's better. You know, improved handicap ramps off the back of the sidewalk. Right now, the ramps are on the corners, so you have to really come out in the street into the parking lot to get to those ramps. The new ramps will be behind the sidewalk, so more accessible and safer. As far as heritage, there's no historic buildings or architectural elements on the As far as microclimate, again, we're replacing the building with an addition of similar size, so we see no adverse impacts on light, air, water resources, noise, or temperature levels. Energy efficiency, Dan spoke about that, you know, high energy efficiency in the new wing, much improved from the old one. As far as detrimental effects, we see no detrimental effects to health, safety, welfare. People... people working in the neighborhood. There's no dangers from fire, explosion, ground pollution. Again, we'll protect the, the wetlands during construction. As far as nearby properties, there'll be no detrimental use to the nearby properties because again, we're, we're slightly larger than before. I think we're coming out maybe another five feet towards the back, I believe. That's about it. I know there's a category on specific standards for High and Washington Street. Longwood Drive is located off of High Street. And we are located a significant distance from High Street. Will not adversely affect the visual quality of High Street. Air quality, we won't be producing any emissions classified as air pollution. Will not emit asbestos, benzene, beryllium, mercury, vinyl chloride, or radio nuclides. As far as plants and animals, the site doesn't contain any wildlife habitats or corridors or any endangered plant species. And again, the removal of the trees, I don't think we're taking any down that are twenty-four inches or greater. Vibration, there shouldn't be any issues with vibration. Except for any, if they have to do blasting. Hopefully we don't. Hopefully we're going to, the new addition will stay above that ledge. And our rain gardens should be above that ledge, so we should avoid that. No EMF emissions for electrical disturbances. Again, we don't think it's a, it's not a historical or archaeological site. Solid waste would be disposable of tree stumps and debris from the construction activity will be removed safely. And then as far as permanent solid waste, it'll be the two compactors out back that will be picked up by a private vendor. And as far as water quality, the site is not in a water resource protection overlay district. That's it.
Good, thank you. So Abby, do we have any staff comments?
Yes, we did circulate the plans to the various review staff. As applicant mentioned, this application does also, or this project does require conservation and zoning board approval. The Conservation Commission, the agent did provide some initial comments on what to be included in the, in the plan. So they had recommended some additions to the plan. They had recommended native plantings, or native species to be planted. The zoning and housing agent, if you recall, in, in the spring, we had recently updated our zoning bylaw to require for this residential retirement community, special permit affordability of fifteen percent. So they will be required for, I think fifteen percent would be the, for affordable housing units. So that, that will be needed at the time of the zoning board's application. And you, the planning board, should make a recommendation to the zoning board for that component when we have that. I think the applicant might still be working on that right now. So when we get that application from the zoning board, you should review that and provide an official recommendation. We also got some comments as the applicant touched on from the fire department about a new hydrant. They'll also require a BDA, a bidirectional amplifier, and a new radio box. And then we received several comments from the health director. There are mostly standard conditions from the health department that the planning board would generally include in, in any of your approvals as conditions of approval related for the applicant to submit prior to demolition and prior to construction about hiring a pest control company performing asbestos survey, documenting that there's no underground tanks, and then permitting for any portable toilets and waste dumpsters needed during the construction. They asked for a construction management plan. And then also the swimming pool and food establishment will need a permit from the board of health.
In this, the, the application to the ZBA is that? It was originally awarded in nineteen eighty-eight. So is that, is that why it's going to the ZBA and not part of this?
Yes, or, yeah, originally, or in the way the Z, the zoning bylaw is now for a residential retirement community, the zoning board is a special permit granting authority. I think when this project originally got its approval, it may have been a different, under a different bylaw. But since that time, that old bylaw is gone, so it's considered a residential retirement community. So it would fall under the zoning board's special permit granting authority.
And when would we make that recommendation? After the application goes in?
Yeah, once we get their application, the zoning board, as one of their application submittals, will be the affordability proposal. So that we would get that and I would circulate that to you. And then at our next meeting, we'd provide comments to the zoning board.
Okay, great. And then the, the comments from Karen, were they provided to? I think some of those are also relevant, so.
Yes, we just, we got these yesterday to the applicant, so they probably haven't had a chance to, to respond. But I think I sent them yes, yesterday.
Okay.
And then peer review.
Okay. And Phil, did you want to give a summary?
Yeah, I can. Phil Paradis with Beta Group. We've been tasked with reviewing this project for the town. Generally, this is a well-put-together package. We have, the area that's being developed has already developed currently. And in many aspects are improvements on the, the current situation. They did ask for a waiver from the traffic study. We would just think documentation-wise, it would be a good idea to get traffic, trip generation relative to the, to the nursing home, relative to the new, just to see if there's any difference. I don't think it's going to be significant. Access, as was mentioned, they're, they're actually widening the roads, keeping general configuration the same, unless there's issues now, which I, I don't, I don't believe there are. The access is, well. Parking, the documents submitted indicate that there's a significant surplus in the site for that, parking-wise. We didn't confirm that, but, but there's very little change in the parking. So maybe the chip generation and the parking would, would, see if there's any increase in that. Relative to stormwater management, again, they are providing some improvements relative to low-impact development techniques and infiltration and treatment. We recommend, just because of the, the history of the soils in that, in this area, that the, that the team provide sub-drains under the rain gardens, just to make sure that they, they ultimately drain properly. And also just, just, I think they have to do some work on the plans because we did find that the record plans for the area were, were correct. Utilities, just, again, the, the water and electric power is not significant. Lighting, lighting and photometric plan are generally in conformance with the Illuminating Engineering Society guidelines. They are separated by significant forest from the neighbors, so I don't think it's going to be an issue. We, we would like to see the, the package of, you know, light poles and details associated with that. Landscaping, they're, they're reconstructing the entire interior landscaping and providing a very robust landscaping plan. Along with the native species, we would recommend that they coordinate snow storage areas and make sure that, you know, there's an adequate area for, for snow storage in, in with the landscaping. Earthwork, we just make sure, one, just want to make sure that there's not a significant amount of earthwork. The grading looks very similar in elevation. And just want to make sure that, you know, this, they're not going to need a permit for the earthwork movement. That's generally, I mean, there's, there's some minor things to include relative to erosion controls and operation maintenance plan, but it's not significant.
Great. So at this point, I'd open, open it up to the board, if the board has any questions. Dave, you want to start with that?
I don't have anything specific. I do appreciate the energy efficiency slide that you put up there because I was curious about what measures were being taken there. And I think that's a good thing we should do with all of our projects to get a review of the energy efficiency, what impact it's going to have. Yeah, I'll leave it to others if there's any questions.
Along those same lines, I was wondering, have you, do you think about solar panels for the roof?
As far as solar panels for the roof, we usually make the roofs ready for solar panels. And it's really up to, you know, how we move forward with that. It's still under review as to whether or not we would provide it for the building. That's all.
I mean, I think in the, I think in the town, we should be thinking about this with some of our plans. It sounds like there's some items that need to be completed, but if, if you could go back and see if there's any way to, to get solar panels on the roof? I mean, it seems to be quite energy efficient. I, I added solar panels to my house. And I think we should start considering this for buildings coming to town.
I'm certainly willing to look at it.
Okay. Chris?
I don't have any specific questions. I think you answered them at the site visit that we had. I think it is a really well-done presentation. I think you answered just about everything that we would be asking before we asked it. So I applaud that. I think Fox Hill Village is a great neighbor and a great asset for the town of Westwood, so. I'd like to see you do whatever you need to do to stick around.
Yeah, well-done presentation. I appreciate all the efforts. Well done by the staff. I don't have any other questions.
No, it's a, it's a beautiful building. It fits in nicely. I have no question.
Yeah, I'm just interested if you, again, the alternative energy, take a, take a look at that because this day and age, I think we really need to be, start to focus it on it from a town level, especially bigger projects, so.
So I'll set for comments from the board. So at this point, is it fair to open up any questions to the public, if anybody has anything? So it sounds like there's some, some information. So Phil, you were able to provide those questions. And then when we receive them back, Abby, in what format will they be? I'm particularly interested in some of the, the missing pieces that Phil.
Well, I think if the applicant, if there's enough time, the next meeting, if you continue to the next meeting on September third, that's three weeks away. So I think that allows enough time for the applicant to respond, can provide electronic submissions that Phil would review and can provide an updated report to the planning board in advance of the September third meeting. One thing you should weigh in on now is the request for the traffic impact study. And if you agree with Phil's suggestion for the evaluation of the existing or former traffic pattern, if you agree with that.
Yeah, it seems reasonable for me. I don't know how other board members feel about that, if we want to take it to a vote or go straight down.
Phil, were you just advocating getting like a baseline of?
I think just a comparison of what the nursing home would have generated for traffic relative to this project. It's probably just, you know, take the trip generation from ITE. Just, just a, you know, general, I don't, again, I don't think it's going to change. You know, they have plenty of parking. I don't think there's an issue with traffic in general.
I think it makes sense to get a comparison since traffic is the biggest issue everywhere right now, so.
Yeah, I think, are you, are you saying that they should have a full study done or that they should calculate based on the different uses? Just to, so kind of summarize the, the numbers that are expected from this. Because, yeah, I would think there won't be ambulances coming in all the time. There won't be people visiting as much, you know, as, as it was before. So it'd be good to get that documented and see, see what the, what we believe the impact will be so that we have that moving forward.
So would you be looking for like a letter of opinion for this? With the calculations for what it is?
Right, you just take the square footage of the nursing home and, you know, whatever it is, an ITE, and then you do the, you know, twenty-four units and.
Sure.
So I think that's it. Do we have a motion to continue?
Make a motion to continue the public hearing Tuesday, September third at seven PM at fifty Carby Street to allow time for the applicant to submit revised plans and materials as requested by the peer review, the board, and any new comments from the hearing.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So it passes five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So second item on the agenda is two seventy-two Summer Street, earth material movement.
Do you want to?
EIDR public hearing.
Should we leave it here for the next meeting?
Could the applicant please come to the podium?
Yeah, we can, is it okay if we leave it here to the next meeting? Okay, we can just put it right there. Thank you.
It's good. Thank you very much.
Oh, thanks.
Still alive, so. How far did you go?
Hundred ninety-two.
Yeah, let's start bridge.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the board. David Johnson from Norwood Engineering, representing the applicant and owners, Mr. and Mrs. Deletzia, who are here this evening as well, to answer any questions that the board might have. I also have reduced copies of the site plan if anybody would like to look at them more closely than, than the television screen. Just let me know. This is a proposal for earth material moving for the construction of a single-family dwelling on Summer Street. It's a seventy thousand square foot lot. There are wetlands located to the rear. None of the work is being conducted within the buffer zone to those wetlands. We have been through Conservation Commission for the stormwater land disturbance permit. That was granted on July the twenty-fourth. And the stormwater system erosion control and so forth that is generally covered by Conservation Commission has been vetted and, and approved. Topographically, the site slopes from Summer Street down towards the wetland. The activity is, is being conducted up, the film material, up towards the front of the lot. Because of the slope, material will need to be brought in to properly grade the lot and create a suitable platform for the proposed dwelling. Approximately five thousand one hundred cubic yards of material will be brought into the site. Some of the things that the committee, that the board is generally concerned with on these earth material movements is what's the truck route coming to the site? In our application, and I think in Abby's recommended conditions of approval, truck traffic will be limited to one twenty-eight to one oh-nine to Summer Street to deposit soil on the site. We've proposed, as part of the stone tracking pad that's typical for most stormwater management plans, we'll be constructing a platform so that trucks, when they come to the site, will be able to back off the street onto this level area in order to dump. There won't be any dumping directly from, from Summer Street. So that is, is a, I think. So that is, is a, I think, a significant part of this application, that all material will be properly dumped onto the site and from within the site. The primary vehicles that will be delivering material to the site will be tri轴s and 18-wheel dump trucks. The material will be coming from a number of locations in the vicinity. The recommendation of, of Beta and of Abby is to provide soil samples for all the material that comes on the site. And the owners, applicants are, are fine with providing those sample results to, to Abby prior to them being deposited on the site. During construction, it'll be the normal work hours in accordance with the town's bylaw for construction activity time and appropriate traffic control will be provided when the trucks come to the site and have to back in to, to deposit the materials. The stormwater, as I said, has been reviewed and approved, but as a general statement, we have met the requirements of the town's stormwater bylaw as well as DEP's requirements for stormwater. We've infiltrated one inch over the impervious areas of pavement and roof and associated patios to the site. We've provided the information that's required by the EDR on the permit application website. Most of that is really not relevant to construction of a single-family dwelling, but we have requested a certain number of waivers that we were not able to accurately provide some response to, and that is the submission of an exterior lighting plan, which is generally not an issue with single-family development, waiver of a traffic impact study, which is pretty apparent for a waiver required for a single-family dwelling, and drawings, renderings, and the presentation model were other items we felt needed to formally request waivers of. With that being a description of the project, I would be happy to answer any questions or the, the applicant owners of the property. This is a personal residence. It is not a spec house being built that's their personal residence, so they can answer any questions on the site design or what they anticipate doing in terms of prepping the site for construction.
Abby, are there any staff comments for?
Let's see, Phil did provide a memo and his comment was asking about where the fill is coming from and to provide verification that the material being imported is, is clean. So the, the board usually asks for a certification either on, on the plan or something in writing from a professional certifying that the fill is clean. Conservation Commission, as the applicant mentioned, did approve this project at their last meeting and a couple of weeks ago in July.
Okay.
No other comments.
And Phil, do you have anything else to share beyond that? Okay. Going down the line, so do you want to start with you, Bill? Do you have any questions?
No, this is probably the, you're going to reside in?
Yes.
Okay.
I saw on the plans, you're putting in a pool, is that correct?
We are potentially, we're going to kind of get the hose off and then possibly.
I'm just curious as to how close it's going to be to the, the wetlands and.
Oh, the entire activity is outside the 100-year buffer. You can see it on the plan. It's the, if you take the red line and you come out the first line, that's the 35-foot no disturb buffer. The next line out, Phil, if you could help me, is the 100-year buffer.
Okay.
And then the darker line is the location of the erosion control barrier. And then you can see that the, the pool and patio area is well outside the 100-foot
Yeah.
jurisdictional area.
Great.
Okay.
Chris, do you have any questions?
Do you live in Westwood now?
Yeah.
Welcome to Westwood. I don't have any questions.
Dave?
I don't have any questions.
Yeah, no questions myself either. So it looks like we, we have three waivers to be considered for this. Does anybody on the board?
Well, actually four.
Right, actually, it's, it's four if you count the drawings or renderings. They did submit their elevation and building permit plans, so it's kind of like a partial waiver. They don't have renderings, but they have what they submitted for the building plans.
Okay. And then do we need, there's nobody here from the public anyway, but we don't need any public comment. So for these, does any of the board members have any issues with the, with the waivers that we have listed? So do you want to make a motion to?
Make a motion to approve the waivers, traffic study, exterior lighting plan, presentation model, and drawings and renderings.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
A motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Stained? So it passes five to none on the, on the waivers. And then there's a number of, should we, should we read through each one? I think it's probably not a bad idea, just so for the record.
Sure. Do you want me to read them or do you want to?
Either, either or, yeah.
I can, do you want me to summarize them?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay. So the first suggested condition I have is there should be no substandard or hazardous fill material used with this project. Applicant shall provide a certification from a certified professional that the fill material does not contain any hazardous or substandard material. The applicant shall provide certification prior to any fill being brought to the property within 30 days of the close of this hearing and prior to the issuance of any building permit. Number two, applicant is responsible for contacting the fire department in Dedham Westwood District to verify the access to the water service and hydrant. I know today, we did learn a little bit more that the applicant responded to the fire department's request that there is a hydrant across the street, but just wanted to verify with them that that is okay. Three is the crushed stone entrance shall be replaced when the stone becomes clogged to make sure it's capturing the dirt before it enters the public way. The applicant shall notify the Department of Public Works prior to installation and backfill of the infiltration chambers to ensure compliance with the design. Number five is compliance with the town's construction bylaw. Number six is related to the truck routes in allowing or prohibiting the truck from traveling down other streets such as Grove Street, so the applicant should access the site from Summer from 109. Applicant is responsible for filing any other permits or approvals that may be required. And the last condition is applicant is responsible for repairing any damage that may be caused to the sidewalks or roads or anything in the public way.
Thank you for, for those, Abby. Does anyone make a motion?
So I make a motion to approve the EIDR for earth movement at 272 Summer Street as submitted in the plan with the list of conditions stated forward by Abby.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? So it passes five to zero. Thank you very much. And we need a motion.
Close the public hearing?
So we have a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stand? Passes five, zero to close the hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
So third item on the agenda is 300 Fox Hill and 25 Fox Meadow Drive. It's approval not required plan, an A and R that we received.
Yep.
So there's no applicant here. Abby, do you want to give us a?
Sure. Hold on, let me just, they did submit, earlier today, they did submit a request to withdraw the plan. So I do have in here an updated motion for you, if you want. Let me just see if I can pull that up. Do you want me to pull up the plan so you can see it?
Sure, yeah.
Hold on, I forgot to make it easily accessible, so I just have to go in and get it.
So is the, the letter pretty brief?
Yep. So my recommendation, and I reviewed this with town council and the building commissioner, that this, this is not an approval not required with plan because it does require approval under the subdivision control law, which requires a public hearing and review and modification of the original definitive subdivision because it's altering a lot that was in this definitive subdivision that was approved back in 2004. At that time, it was called the Captain Crossings subdivision. So it had different requirements related to frontage and lot size, but it was specifically shown as a buildable lot at that time, Lot 4. This A and R plan, sorry, let me, let me just pull it up. Hold on, where is it? Here it is.
Were they just not able to sell that Lot 4? Is that their problem?
I'm not sure.
It's frontage of like 30 feet.
Because the applicant, the owner owns both lots, right? So this 22-lot subdivision is Fox Meadow Estates up here. This was Lot 4 that was approved as a buildable house lot. 300 Fox, Fox Hill Street is owned by the same owner. This plan shows taking 23,000 square feet of the Lot 4 in the subdivision and combining it with this lot here.
So that Lot 3 was part of the subdivision?
Yeah.
But it's just on Fox Hill Street?
This one.
So that's built in the same style of the homes as, if you could, appreciate your comments.
This is the original.
So they, so they bought as a buffer the lot behind them as well?
No.
No?
Want me to explain?
Sure.
Yes, please. I'm trying to piece this together.
Sure. The owner of the house on Fox Hill Street, which is a pretty, fairly old mansion, I guess, it's quite a large home, the owner of that house owned the land that created the.
The whole subdivision.
The whole subdivision. Lot 3, which is where the home is, was part of the subdivision. Subdivision restricted the number of homes to 22 lots. Lot 4 currently is a buildable lot. It was approved under that subdivision with, with that 30 feet of frontage. There were a couple, at least one other, I think, lot in there that was created with minimal frontage. I wish we had requested the withdrawal, so I didn't bring anything with me, but I did prepare an aerial photograph that kind of hits home what's, what's happening here. The owner of the lot with the house would like to take this additional land to include the, his entire cleared backyard. It's quite a large lawn, standard trees that he has planted. And when he sells, did I send that to you?
No, I have this. This is from our GAS aerial view.
So it was, it was intended to take a portion of the land to add to his lot for privacy and keeping what he has for shrubbery, plantings, lawn intact with, with his lot. And our position is that this is an A and R plan. No change in the frontage is proposed. No change in the number of lots is proposed. It is, in our opinion, an internal lot line adjustment. Abby is correct, there's a reduction in the lot size for Lot 4, but there's an increase in the lot size for Lot 3. So the density for the, these two lots and the density for the subdivision remain the same. So between Abby and the building inspector's opinion, we decided to withdraw the plan and we have an alternative plan that we're hoping to discuss with the building inspector, which we think may throw this back into the category of an approval not required in Abby's mind and the building inspector's mind.
So the, the owner of 300 Fox Hill is in fact the owner of Lot 4 as well?
Yep.
Okay.
And it was approved under a subdivision plan, but I don't, in my opinion, believe it needs to be done as a modification to the subdivision plan because the lot is the lot, the subdivision road is not being modified, the construction is not being modified. The lot was, was created by a special permit for that MRD, multiple resi.
Major.
Major residential development section of the bylaw. So I managed to actually find that on the internet, the 2006 Westwood zoning bylaw, which I don't even think the town has. So I made a copy of it, Abby, I'd be happy to ship it off to you. And I think there's a statement in there that may shed some additional light on what we're proposing. In a nutshell, I think one of your concerns and the building inspector's concern was that the lot was, was being reduced in size below 80,000 square feet, even though in the subdivision, lots were as small as 50,000 to 60,000 square feet. We've come up with a scheme where the lot, Lot 4 would not be reduced, but reduced below the current 80,000 square foot zoning. And that hopefully that would address your concern and the building inspector's concern that it would stay above 80,000 square feet.
So what do we do, what do we need to do tonight?
You do need to take action on this A and R because whenever you have these applications, you have to submit, the board has to vote and submit in writing to the town clerk within 20 days that it has approved it as not requiring subdivision approval or that it does need subdivision approval.
So since they withdrew, is it a simple motion to?
I thought, I have updated my motion to, it's for you, would be, I'd recommend that you determine that this A and R plan was improperly filed as an A and R because the plan requires subdivision approval. The planning board can accept the applicant's request without prejudice received on August 13th. And the reasoning is for myself and the building commissioner is, we think it's more than a lot line change because there was an approved subdivision, even though it was under different zoning at the time that did allow under 80,000 square feet and different frontage requirements, it still needs to go through the public hearing process of a definitive subdivision where all the lot owners in the subdivision would be notified. So we recommend filing this subdivision formal modification to make this change. So we think that the planning board could then review this under a subdivision modification.
Is there any other comments from staff?
Nope.
Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, there's no, nobody here from the public to make comment. So do you want to make the motion?
Make a motion to determine this plan was improperly filed as an A and R because the plan requires subdivision approval. The planning board hereby accepts the applicant's request to withdraw without prejudice received on August 13th, 2019.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Stained? Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you for summarizing.
Appreciate the clarity. It wasn't clear before.
Is it clear now?
I think clearer.
Clearer. Thank you. Have a good evening. So next item on the agenda is review and discussion of zoning. So next item on the agenda is review and discussion of zoning amendment articles to submit to fall town meeting. So the way the timeline plays is that we have this meeting and the next meeting to identify any, if and any zoning...
Yeah, we should really, this meeting, the select board meeting on August 26th, is that right? That Monday, August 26th. So they've asked for any warrant articles, so they will consider warrant articles. They have to make a decision by mid-September, I believe it's September 15th. The charter says the select board have to decide by September 15th if they're going to have a fall town meeting. So they've asked for early if anyone has any warrant article submissions. At this time, it can be a brief description of what you're proposing, but then it would have to be ready, pretty much looking at a timeline. September 5th is when we would have to send the legal ad to the newspaper. So you'd want to submit tonight your request, you know, after you go tonight, and then I would summarize the articles tonight.
The small paragraph description of what it is?
Yes, it's usually a few sentences. But it needs to be, your meeting, your next meeting is September 3rd.
Then it would have to be pretty much written up on the board.
Yeah, so it's not, it's a quick timeline, especially in the fall.
So it's three weeks from now, so if there is any that we discuss, that's three weeks to get texts together, to then share with any of the board members and recommend. And then that way, so on the 26th, the select board meeting, they will have this description of the warrant article.
Yep, yep.
And then they decide in September at their next meeting whether or not there's a fall town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I generally, I mean, we have, always have spring town meeting in May, the first Monday in May, and then it's, we're not, you know, sometimes we have fall town meetings, sometimes we don't. So generally, I'd recommend zoning changes once a year, because of the long, the process to change zoning. So right now, I'm not proposing any zoning amendments, because I really like you all to focus on, and all of us to focus on, the comprehensive plan. I think we really need the fall to do that, because as we know, it's spring, that's where we get really busy with application of projects that come in, because they're trying to get permitted in advance of the spring, summer construction season, and then we always have a spring town meeting. So that's happening no matter what. So I'd like you to focus on a comprehensive plan in the fall. Also, I mean, I did get a call today, or yesterday, and I spoke to someone on School Street who wanted you to consider zoning amendments or changes to short-term rentals. So right now, our zoning bylaw, it allows for a resident property owner to rent rooms for not more than three non-family members. So that's what we have in place now. So she was concerned...
Yeah, I actually did some research on this one. So why don't, do you want to just dig into, to see if any of the board members have anything to bring forward? I think that's probably the best use of time. So why don't we start with that one? So I've looked into this to see what other towns have done for short-term rentals, and it sort of plays into the visioning session that we had for the comprehensive plan. And one of the articles that I'd like to bring forward is a zoning article related to short-term rentals. And the best approach that I saw was a, was limiting the rental such that the rental has to be at least 30 days. And this plays into public health type of items, too. So you have, so you have, so if somebody wants to rent a room in their house, it has to be a minimum of 30 days. So that's the article that I'd like to bring forward. So I've looked into the bylaws themselves, so maybe I can sit with you to go over those, but that's what, along the same lines as that call that you got from a resident. I thought that that would have an impact on that. Because what does happen is now you have, and actually, I did a search on a number of Airbnb-type of sites, and I found that the number of residences on Airbnb has increased. So I looked, in February, I looked at Westwood as a whole, and there were only two Airbnbs. And then I did a search just last week, and now the number's up to seven, seven or eight. So it's definitely a monetized type of way to, that somebody could purchase a home and then essentially manage it remotely and pay for their mortgage, and now you have residents in the neighborhood who have transient neighbors that they don't know. So having that 30-day minimum takes care of that type of an item.
Okay. Some communities, yeah, they, some communities have put regulations into their zoning, and then some have done that in addition to, or permit, like licensing permitting, sometimes they'll do like a business permitting perspective. So there's different approaches for zoning. You'd want to define it, define what you're regulating, and then specify how you're going to regulate it.
So I'm throwing that out to the table, so Deb, how do you feel about that as an idea? Do you think that you, is that something you would like or modify?
I think that the Airbnbs do need to be, we need to find some sort of zoning bylaw to capture the concerns that the residents have. So, I don't know, I think it's worth looking at what the other towns do.
And then just going down the table, so Dave?
And so are you thinking something for this for fall town meeting?
Yeah, so this is what this is all about, yeah. And then whether or not, I've, so I've looked into the language, so the idea tonight is just present a warrant article, how do you feel about it? Is it something that you would support, or you'd want modified to support? And then if it looks like it has support, then I would dig into the effort to write it up, so at the next meeting in three weeks, it's in a presentable form.
I think I would be sensitive to what Abby brought up about us focusing on the comprehensive plan. This doesn't seem to me to be something that's urgent, that couldn't wait till spring town meeting. My gut tells me I'd rather focus on the comprehensive plan, knowing that the reason we haven't updated in 20 years was other projects and other energies being spent on things like Westwood Station and University Station. You get sidetracked with some other things. I just don't see this particular issue being something that can't wait for more exploratory research to find out, should it be done through licensing, should it be done through zoning? There's, I think, as Abby indicated, a couple of different ways to look at it. I think jumping right into zoning change in three months' time might be a little premature.
Comprehensive plan is, I'm putting my effort into that. I have a full-time job, I can do all three. Bill?
Yeah, the comprehensive plan, I understand we need to work on that, but I think this is important to the residents, I think, that ask for change in there. I think it's probably keeps them up night when the house across the street goes up for sale as to what's going to happen. So I think we should probably really look into this and be serious about it.
All right, and then going down the line, so Dave, do you have any warrant articles that you would consider?
Well, I think, I was feeling like I didn't want to, I want to have things at the once-a-year approach, kind of consistent with what Abby was saying, but I think there's a bigger, there is a bigger article out there that we didn't resolve last year. And I went to the Dedham Planning Board last week, I attended their meeting they had, where there were over 100 residents there who were very upset that a gun store was going to be opened near a park, near a playground. And because they did not have gun stores or firearm sales defined in their zoning, there was absolutely nothing anyone could do about it. There was no public hearing, it was just the building commissioner reviewed it as a retail use, and there it was. And regardless of what your opinions would be on gun stores, in Westwood, we have it defined in our bylaws, it's zoned for the industrial, local business A, local business B, and highway business districts, and it's through appeal, the zoning board of appeals would have a special permit to grant. So we have it covered because it's defined in our zoning. And last year, we were very close to consensus on defining medical uses. There was a lot of concern and fear in the community about methadone clinics. And ironically, because people went on Facebook and a lot of lies and misinformation were spread about that, there was a perception that we were actually trying to encourage that. And so it kind of blew up, and it was unpleasant and all, but we've left it out there so that it's an undefined use. And if someone did come to town with a use like that and proposed it for Islington Center, for High Street, for residential neighborhood even, we would be in that position of hundreds of people very upset about this and saying, why didn't the planning board do their job and define this use and make a choice as to where it could go? So I think that that issue, it's not going to be easy to resolve that, as we saw last year, but I think that that's something we need to do. I would say we should do it at the spring town meeting, but if we're going to bring things up for, you know, zoning amendments, I think we should discuss it now. Maybe we end up after the fall that we don't reach a consensus again, but I just feel like that's an issue where we didn't complete the job last year, and, you know, we should, we should have a responsibility to pick it back up again. If we don't, then we run that risk. And right now, it's, you know, maybe it's not a high probability that no one's like trying to do that, but I don't know. So just, that's, I throw it out there and...
So in the Dedham situation, was it completely out of the bylaws?
It's just not defined in the bylaws, and what they said was...
You were just using as an example of getting caught, not having...
I'm saying we're lucky that it was, for gun stores, we're lucky that it's defined in our bylaws, and so that's great. The thing that we haven't defined is medical uses, which could include methadone clinics, or it could include a urgent care center. And so we, I know it's sort of, it's not entirely apples and oranges, but the situation I want to avoid is where people feel that we're powerless to do anything, where they say, well, why didn't the planning board do their job? And like, why can't we complain to somebody about this now? It's like, nope, the building inspector just has to approve it, or, you know, it would play out differently than this situation is happening in Dedham now, but I just feel like that was something we left unfinished, and we should use, do the right effort to get a consensus from the community and make a decision as to where that kind of use goes.
Yeah, I would agree with Dave. Given the two issues that have been brought up, the Airbnb and methadone clinic, if we were, I don't think we have the bandwidth to do both before a fall town meeting. I just, the staff, us, I just don't, and comprehensive plan, I just don't see that happening. But I guess if I had to look at which one do we try to tackle before fall town meeting, if we're going to do one, I would say the methadone clinic is...
Treatment Center. Treatment Center is what we're...
Sorry, that's what's in my head, I can't get it out. But if I had to choose, you know, triage, what is our town's biggest concern, it would be that versus an Airbnb, if we had to do that. I still think we should wait and explore. We haven't even touched it since that meeting, discussed it. So I really think it's a real sensitive subject, and coming up with a solution between now and fall town meeting is really going to be difficult to do. I think we have to really look at all of our options. Right now, we're totally exposed, it could go anywhere, the treatment center, and we knew that, but we accepted that as the decision a year ago, or whenever that was, last fall? I can't remember when that was.
It was spring, it was just in the spring.
Isn't that... So anyway, that's my gut reaction to what was just discussed here. I think we should wait and explore them in a more serious and less frantic manner. Because, you know, we had one person on School Street make a comment, and based on your research, we have seven people who are actually doing the Airbnb. So I understand everyone has a concern, and not everyone's voiced it, but as of right now, that's eight people in town have raised the issue of Airbnb out of 15,000, 10,000 registered voters.
No, the number of Airbnbs have tripled in three months, right?
Yeah, I get that, but the numbers of 6,000 homes and, you know...
So why don't we continue the conversation here? The idea here is to brainstorm for articles. We all, I agree, Dave, that's an important one. It's, I think it's a, for me, it's a challenging one to get into the details of it, especially considering that we need, and we need to be fully flushed out by the next meeting.
Right, but I think you should at least decide tonight if you want to submit something so that I can send it to the select board, so that they have it for the August 26th meeting.
Yeah, that's understood.
They won't close the warrant, but they'll, I don't think until September, but they'll receive it, and that way they know...
And by no means are my, these warrant articles, one is more important to the other. That's clear, it's just a matter of, some of them are more straightforward than others.
So even if we present some warrant articles, they could still decide not to have a town meeting?
Yeah.
Yes, we didn't have a town meeting, I don't think, fall last year?
No.
Yeah, so we didn't, we don't always have one, so that's why...
We can always withdraw the articles if we don't feel we're truly prepared.
Yes, you could submit something tonight, and then on September 3rd, you could review again, and you could withdraw it then.
So Deb, do you have any?
So one of the things I was looking at is that, it's my understanding that Morrison Park is in the FMUOD district?
And Islington Fire Station.
Yes, it's...
So that's really the only piece of green space we have there? I'd love to see that pulled out of the FMUOD and reassigned to another district so that it can't really be built on, to keep it afield there.
So you're saying Morrison is...
It's within the flex and lot to use, so is that, if the town, it's owned by the town?
Town, they'll sell it to a developer.
Correct, and so I'd like to protect that area from being too overly developed, being too dense.
I think it was a mistake probably that they put it in there.
In order to do that, it would be town meeting, would have to...
Yeah, yeah, so it would be a zoning map change, zoning map change.
What zone? That's, I really have to take a look at the zoning map.
Right now, it's being used for recreation.
Correct, we don't have a recreational zone.
And it's no plan that we know of as it being built on.
Not in the...
So why would it be in the FMUOD?
So does that include the fire station?
Yes, the fire station also, I would think.
Yeah, the whole area, yeah, I think, I'm just looking at the map there, it's that pink area, it's that pink magenta color, that's, it's in the local business district, and also the FMUOD overlay is over the local business district.
So what would that, so that would be similar to any type of mapping change that we've seen in previous town meetings?
We did, the fire station, that actually was, that was developed on the FMUOD, but it has now, it's on its own parcel, so Morrison Park now is a separate parcel. That was recently.
They're both still FMUOD?
Yes, so both in the FMUOD.
So it should probably be both in there, I would think.
I don't know, the fire station, I don't think it's staying there.
Yeah, I think you would want to keep the fire station in because it's conforming.
If they had to make amendments or changes to the fire station, what would happen then if it wasn't part of that zoning?
You wouldn't want to make it non-conforming to what it operates under. I think the fields are on a different lot, I believe.
But there's an underlying district, it's, I guess it's local business A or something?
Yeah, local business.
B is Islington.
Yeah, I think it is.
All right, so just brainstorming, so Dave, Chris, you said you had done, Deb, do you have anything else?
No, I think that's it for now.
And Bill, do you have?
No, I agree with you with the ones that you proposed.
Yeah, there was another one that I couldn't find in our bylaws, where it talks about, I've seen other, reviewed other towns where it talks about, if it's not explicitly stated within the bylaw, then it is prohibited unless by court order or by state law.
Oh, yes, so that would be, no, so we should, right, that's called making your bylaw prohibitive bylaw, so we could strengthen that language. bylaw prohibitive bylaw. So, we could strengthen that language. So, that's usually probably in the purpose, purpose. We had started to think about that when we reviewed the treatment centers in the spring, but we hadn't, we didn't go through with that.
So, would that be council making that, those changes in terms of the warning, or?
I think we would draft them, but we would run it by and review with town council.
And then, the only other one that came to mind was, Dave, along the lines of, you were talking about shops for gun shops where you, where you said it was, you could find it in this, these districts by ZBA approval. Should we reduce the number of spots that that's in? So, now you're, it has the restriction where it's by ZBA approval, but that also includes like up on High Street, by High Street Market. So, how would-
Right. I did kind of wonder like local, why is it, you know, local business A and B and, you know?
And not just highway business or something like that. Like, when I thought about Dedham, I thought, I looked into our bylaws. And then, when I saw that, I noticed that it was in a number of different areas that I think that residents wouldn't be thrilled about.
I mean, I, when I thought about, now that's, if you think the substance abuse centers opens a can of worms, then the gun shops might open a bigger can of worms. But, the thing I liked about our bylaws was that it's by special permit. So, let's suppose someone did want to open a gun shop next to Roach Brothers in that, or where the army recruiting thing was, for example. So, I believe it's by, because it's BA, there would be a hearing. The ZBA would have a public hearing, and the neighbors across the street and everything would come in there, and they would consider, is this appropriate? Because where it's located and everything, we have, so, I don't know if that's enough, but that's, you at least have a hearing. Instead of, if it's undefined, then-
I just thought it would be good to, we have so many different zones. I like that there, we have it in the bylaws, but I would, I'd be in favor of looking at the zone and then removing some of them.
Look at an overlay. I think that's what they were, what one of the people in Dedham was saying is maybe do an overlay like you do for adult uses. You can then define it to be something, like, instead of just tacking it on industrial. Because, like, as we found out, if you put something, or let's put it in the era, no, I didn't say that. But, it's, if you just put it in an industrial, well, that abuts neighborhoods. And so, you might want to define an overlay district for uses that you think a lot of people would have a problem with and kind of give it a buffer away from the neighborhoods and stuff. So, it'd be a zoning map thing.
Sure. So, that's another idea. So, are there anything, is there anything else from the table?
No.
Okay. So, Dave, you're talking about the Spring for drug treatment. I agree, it's a complicated item. We need to look at the map. I'd also like to get legal counsel for the state to see what, are there any legal precedent for somebody coming in and similar to what happened in Dedham? I'd like to find out more about why they were able to just go in and open up a shop like that. Like, what is the right? I understand you have, there's a freedom of speech.
Well, it's just, it's a retail use.
Right. Yes. I think they would consider it retail. Yeah.
They got caught with their pants down, basically.
It's a, you know, it's perfectly, it's legal, it's a retail use. There's other things you have to do to comply with that. You have to get the police chief to approve and all, but that are state requirements and all. But, because it wasn't specifically outlined and put in a specific district, then it would be considered anywhere that retail's allowed. So, they're not residential wouldn't, it's not a use that would be allowed in residential districts, but any retail, anywhere retail's allowed.
All right. So, for, I'd be willing to move forward with the short-term rental item. And I can sit down, I can, I've done a bit of research. I've already started putting together PowerPoint slides for it.
Okay.
So, similar to what you would use at a town meeting or a FinCom situation. You said the, making the bylaw a prohibitive?
Prohibitive bylaw.
That's just a one-line statement. So-
Yeah. I think you can put something in the beginning of the bylaw, like under the purpose.
And then, the only other one, then, the gun shops, within Westwood, I would be willing to look at that bylaw to see, because essentially, that's just the uses map where it talks about where it would go. So, to me, that's, that's pretty simple. It's more of a decision. Do we want to, do we want to keep it in all these zones, or do we want to restrict it to, to less than what we have?
Right. We have fire-
It's more of a location item.
Yeah. So, we already have it defined. So, it's, you'd probably look at the table of uses.
Right. And then, the FMUOD for Morrison, I won't have time to work on that. So, I don't know if there's somebody else who'd want, you brought it up.
I can do it. It's pretty straightforward. So-
And do you want to work with Abby so that you have the correct, because you need the current map, then you need to say what you're proposing to change it to. So, it sounds like it's just Morrison Field. It sounds like the fire station isn't as impacted.
It's a softball field, too.
Oh, the softball field, yes.
And probably the basketball court.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Because that's-
I don't know about the TPW shit. The only baseball field in town that is not part of the school is Sheehan. There's actually a delineation as you go through the woods. So, I don't know what they're listed as. Maybe it's, I know it's town-owned, but the Sheehan baseball fields and that soccer field are not part of the school district grounds, like Martha Jones is, Hamlin is, Downey is. But, Sheehan is not, and Morrison is the only other field space that-
Is Sheehan though, is, what's that term that they use, official, like in the size of it, as a baseball?
For Little League?
Yeah.
Well, there's no home run fence. So, everything else is the same.
I know that they made Morrison larger to have tournaments at.
It's the infield and pitcher's mound and everything, they're all exactly the same. It was just, Morrison was where Little League held their premier league, the 12-year-olds and up. So, they just, and it was, it was the nicest field to start with. It just made sense to make that their premier field at the time. But, I was just thinking, for zoning, I don't know what the Sheehan baseball fields and soccer fields is zoned.
I think it's residential, but I may be wrong.
It may, if you're going to change it, other than local business B, maybe it's the same thing, whatever Sheehan fields are zoned as. I don't know. It might be-
I think all, looking at the map, I think most other fields are all residentially zoned.
Yeah. I was going to say, it's probably residential over in that area.
All right. So, it sounds like we're done with the discussion here. So, Abby, are you around on Friday?
We have our, one of our-
Comp plan.
Yep. Facilities, comp plan meetings.
What about Thursday afternoon?
This Thursday. I think a little, next week would probably be better. Do you want to meet next week?
Next week doesn't work for me.
Oh, wait, you're, yeah. I'm away Monday and Tuesday.
Do you have enough for, and of course, the-
Oh, to submit. Yes. I have enough.
The selectmen decide on fall meeting. That's fine.
Right. So, I can submit, it's a summary of these articles for right now. Yep. So, I can submit the four articles. Yep. For right now, that's enough.
Make a motion or anything to?
I guess you can, you can vote for these four articles for right now if you want.
Do you want to do them individually?
And then, and then we can review again on September meeting. Because I think, I don't know when the warrant officially closes, but I know that they asked for early submissions for August 26th so they can begin their review.
So, were you voting on them before the final language, or?
Yeah. I think you can vote to just submit your warrant articles to the selectmen.
The paragraph, that small paragraph.
Yep. The couple of sentences description.
So, do you want to go one by one?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the, so the first one is the zoning, the zoning map change for how Morrison Field is currently under-
FMUOD.
Multi-use. So, is it a formal vote, or just say who's in favor?
So, we just-
We don't need a first, we need a second.
Just to move the discussion forward in the form of a bylaw.
Yes. So, all those in favor of the Morrison Field FMUOD?
Aye.
The short-term rental, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Prohibitive law statement, aye.
Aye.
And the, this would be the gun shop where we do have it in our zoning. It's just taking a look at the location. So, all those in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye. Then, I would like to propose actually that we do, to get it, so we vote on it. Do we want to consider the substance abuse treatment centers and definitions and all? Do we want to do that now? So, I'm suggesting we take a vote on that.
So, the challenge I have for that, Dave, is only that it's by next meeting, we have to have it in final language to be present to the board to then-
Well, I would present what we had, we would just pick up where we left off, basically, the language that was at the last meeting that we-
But, that's, there was a few different options. One was splitting the-
We'd start with, I mean, we could then, basically, what we had at that meeting, I would submit that. And then, if we don't, we can change it. But, that's more, that's more detail than we have on any of these other ones.
But, what were we submitting? What was the recommendation?
You said we selected a zone?
We didn't go forward with the-
So, we had a-
We didn't come to a location. We were talking about doing a-
Everything got shut down. The only thing that people brought up that was a possible possibility was the other ARO.
Right. Splitting the ARO.
Splitting the ARO, but that's a zoning change. We'd have to do that first before we could propose that, right?
Right. Well, you could do that now. I think it's this, I think the direction you were starting to go in was expanding your original proposal. You were looking at possibility of removing or rezoning on the map, one of the ARO zones. So, I think it was that one by East Street. So, you-
Decoupling the AROs.
Yeah. So, I think this is a, I think this will just, that one would just take more time because you'd have to change it on the map. But, then you have to define every use that would be allowed there and describe what's not allowed. So, you would essentially either change it into an existing zone or create a whole new zoning district. So, I just think that takes a little bit more time to think about what can and can't go in there if you were to do that. Because it's more than just a map change. It would be map and text change.
Can we have a placeholder?
You can.
Essentially, has to, by our next meeting-
Yeah. You could submit it.
Actually, there are two different things. We had already punted the idea of defining substance abuse treatment centers, and we had come to just including medical centers, which would affect like whether there was a urgent care type.
Right. Or-
That's kind of where we were.
Medical clinic. It was medical clinic and hospital were the other two definitions. Yeah. So, you had, you were doing a couple of different things. You had defined the substance abuse and treatment center, definition for hospitals, which included the overnight stays, and then medical center or clinic. And then, you're deciding where, the most controversial one that was the most concerned was where to allow the treatment centers. So, you, you could-
I just think it's going to take more than one minute.
Since we can't, we can't even recall what exactly, where we landed. All right. So, that's, I want to put a placeholder on the Spring Town Meeting, deal with it.
What we could do is just, we can add it as an agenda item so that we can-
It should be discussed.
Work on it over time.
Yeah.
We all agree it's important.
It has to be addressed. Because we're just as exposed as Dedham was with the gun shop issue.
Right. And Abby, do you have everything you need from us?
So, the four zoning articles, and then the one for Spring Town Meeting is the more comprehensive review of the various medical uses?
Yes. Okay. Moving on in the agenda, the comprehensive plan update, progress reports from the liaison. So, it's moving along nicely. The groups are busy working, meeting.
All right. So, each of the groups, so I know we've had a few meetings so far, five or six, and then we have a few more upcoming. This, a couple more this week and a couple more in a couple of weeks, some of the committees. So, really, the steering committee sections, teams, and you are meeting to kind of review what has been done so far and how you want to go about in the next couple of months. So, the steering committee members, and the goal is for the steering committee to come together in September and hopefully at least have each section put together at least an initial draft with their, working on with you, the liaisons, and their kind of teammate. And then, the steering committee will review in September when they meet, kind of check in where they are, and then think about how they want to move forward over the next few months.
Because at some point, the different subsections, so I met, so as an update, I met with the transportation group, and they had, they had nicely worked, tracked changes for the previous comprehensive plan. So, you're able to review what the changes were to see what the impact was, and then talk about any of the items for discussion. So, at what point do we see other people's sections beyond the liaison? So, now we're at the liaison stage, so making its way to the planning board. So, is that more of a, so?
Well, the goal is when we're trying to meet with these groups is to come out with at least, you know, by September, September to at least have a first draft. So, right now, we're recommending, starting on a draft, really compiling what you have, because we have lots of notes, ideas, input from the surveys, and what we've heard and from the vision session, but we need to start putting it on paper. So, I think once each teammate looks at it and provides their comments, try to get it in one place, they should be working together. I've created a Dropbox link that you have access to, so you can see that. But, I'd recommend the steering committee meeting in September, and then to see when do they want to come, or when they thinking they can start coming to planning board.
My thought is, I'm guesstimating probably at your October 1st meeting. That would be the goal, because they'll want to meet in September, have a draft. And then, how I'm thinking about it would be, I think you'd have a series of meetings. That's why I think it'll take the whole fall into the winter. We want to look at your agendas, schedule, you know, if we can.
The battery's not in there.
Oh, my battery's dead. Okay. We'd probably want to schedule like a series of public workshops, I think you'd want to call it. If we can arrange meetings where we have like the first hour, first two hour, or agendas if we don't have anything else, that we can focus on one or two sections at a time, where we can, I would think the steering committee would present their draft, initial goals and objectives to you, to the audience, anyone present, and provide comments and feedback. And then, I would expect they continue working on it from there.
Now, what I would want to have happen before that, so before that, we will see the drafts?
Yes.
Okay. Because at this point, we're still with, we're in our lane-
Yeah.
With our two or three sections each.
Yeah. I would think, and some of you might want to get together, get together again before coming to a planning board meeting. So, that's why I think the steering committee members, you know, the teams of two in the planning board liaison will want to review.
And then, again, what is the, what are the rules for open meeting? So, if they, these meetings are not, they're not publicized?
Right. These ones are not-
So, you have one planning board meeting with two or three members?
Right.
So, what if another planning board meeting was interesting in attending that?
Planning board member was interested in attending?
Another-
You can have two, right? You just can't have three.
Right. It can't be a quorum, if a quorum of any official body is present, that's considered deliberation. So, it has to be posted.
So, two is fine.
Right. But, right now, we still, you know, recommending-
But right now, we're still, you know, recommending just meeting in the small groups with the liaison, and then, and then as early as we can, start coming to, to make them all kind of public information and public sessions, so having them at your meeting, since we have a venue and a forum for that, and they would be posted. But I think for the, for the drafts, once the committees get there, you can review them.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments from the board?
No?
Sure. I, I just have, for the next meeting, if we could have like a budget review, I know the planning board has a budget, I'm new, so I've never seen it, so if you could bring that in just so, maybe the rest of the people have seen it, I haven't seen it, so.
Well, no, probably not, I mean, budget, we just have like the town's general.
Is there a budget for?
There's a budget for the planning board.
We have, I mean.
The planning department, maybe?
No, planning board, there's a planning board, if you look at the, the budget for the town, there's a budget for the planning board, and I'd like to review it.
That seems reasonable, yeah. So whatever they.
We call it the planning board, I mean, we don't have, you can review it, but we do have like a cost, let's say, I think, a small amount per conference, so I think we've used it maybe, it's like a hundred dollars or something, so it's.
It's worth, it's, I mean, it's.
So it's, it's like the planning department.
It doesn't, it doesn't say that.
But I think that's what we're, how much, what's, what is the, the whole package of things, like, basically?
Yeah, the salary of staff.
Do we, it's, we have you and we have, do we have part-time of somebody else's part with the planning department and kind of, I think it would just, it would be useful to see what the, you know, what is, how is it structured? And then there's like a discretionary or something, not discretionary, but there's like some money that I think you're thinking about, it's a very small amount, that could pay for things like going to a conference or something. And there's also, I would like to know what's the sidewalk fund, like, where that lives and what's the current balance on that?
We've only received one payment for the sidewalk one, but we will be soon from the lodge project.
In reviewing all that, I would recommend we dismiss issues like salaries of staff, because it's really not, that's up to the town and what they pay them. The, the, the other funds you're talking about are, I think, are totally within our purview, but I, I don't think it's necessary to discuss publicly the issues of salaries.
I don't think we're discussing, we're just going to discuss the budget as well, I don't think we're really going to.
I think that's, the lion's share of the budget is the salaries of staff.
Right. But I'm just, we have a planning board budget, we are the planning board.
Yeah, we, yeah, we should know, we should know, that's clear.
I don't know who makes the budget, but.
And then, um.
Bill, it's just the line item from the, from what gets voted on at town meeting, right? Like, it's that section.
But, yeah, it says planning board.
Yes, one of the details. All right, so other business items, Monday, November 4th, meeting change?
Oh, yes, so if you, there's no election on Tuesday, November 5th this year. Originally, when we scheduled it, I had changed that date to the Monday night, do you want to change back to the Tuesday night? Because I thought there may be an election.
Should change it to the 5th?
Oh, sorry, change it back to the Tuesday, the 5th. Instead of, right now, I have rescheduled it for.
That's fine for me. November 5th, how about you, Dave?
Yeah.
Is the 5th okay, Tuesday?
Yeah, so.
It's in keeping with our Tuesday nights?
Yes, it makes it easier to, to track.
And then approval of minutes from June 25th.
I didn't review them.
I didn't, I didn't review, I didn't, Jessica has provided all the minutes, I'm sorry, I haven't, I haven't reviewed them, I still need to, and then I will.
So a line item, a line item for next meeting, that's fine. And the upcoming meetings are September 3rd, 17th, October 1st, and October 22nd. And, motion to close?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Let's talk.
Come on up here, you want to discuss this one, thanks for the legislation.
Some of the, some updates?
You have updates, Abby?
Building one of Westwood Place.
The condos at Westwood Place should be opening soon. I did review the site a week ago and signed up on the first building, and then the second building should be opening within the next couple of months. CBS is almost ready, there's a couple items still waiting, that was fence screening along, around the dumpster, and the perimeter fencing around those municipal lots was still needed when I last checked.
And you still need an answer or two for the fence, don't you?
Actually, Dave got back to me, said, never mind, they're okay with the eight-foot fence as originally approved, so that didn't happen.
And then peer review selection.
Oh, yes.
Did any of the other companies, did they provide, I was looking for a little bit more information from them, I mean, I think Beta does a, a fine job, I think it'd be nice to use another company, but I haven't used them before, so they, so we did send them out an RFP for previous work.
Yeah, we haven't.
But without having worked with them before.
The last time we did, you know, the last meeting, you did get the ones from McMahon and also PSC Group. We've never used McMahon Associates before, we used Westwood, PSC Group for Westwood Estate subdivision. And I think they both provided a little summary of other projects they've worked on at, in their last package.
Yeah.
So that's usually what we do, is we usually go out for a lot of, and ask if anyone wants to submit. We do have 215 High Street, that's the Harlequin Stables, that may be coming back to you in 2018, a developer, and then I think at the end of 2018, an informational update from a local group looking to do the 19 single-family homes as an age-restricted development. They are possibly interested in trying to get back, trying to get an application into this fall, so they might be coming in soon. So I'm wondering if, do you want to just select a peer review from them to use Beta Group, or do you want to continue with the process of, so it's usually about kind of maybe a two-week process, whereas I sent out a request to various groups, asked for them to submit back, and then have you pick. So it's about a two-week timeframe that, that no one's reviewing the application, the applicant was just asking if we would consider selecting someone early. So it's up to you, or unless you want to continue with your usual process on a case-by-case basis.
So is the question, to use Beta or to use somebody else, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm thinking if you're going to keep picking Beta, then we may as well not, I guess, I don't want to say waste of time, but.
No, I hear what you're saying.
We used to have responses from.
You sent out an RFP and then they get.
Another one, and then they've probably stopped, another company, they stopped responding probably because we stopped picking them, so if you want me to do something differently.
Yeah, I just don't have experience with those other groups, and usually when I do, in my line of work, when we're using, when we're selecting from different groups, you actually meet with them and you find out who's going to be working on it and level of experience. So in that, in this situation, Beta is a known entity that does good work, so it's hard for me to compare that to another application without having, without meeting somebody and, or getting recommendations.
Were you speaking to us before, didn't you?
Did we? Or, you know what, okay, we may have actually, before my time, at the one, Ally Drive, the Shields, is it the Shields building?
The MRI.
The MRI Shields, because it's half in Dedham and half.
Yeah, half Dedham, half Western.
So actually, I think we may have used them there.
Seems like we picked them some other time, but I can't remember from where, but it is.
We have used Beals and Thomas.
We do run the risk of becoming a little too in bed with Beta. And they do quality work, and there's no reason not to pick them from a perspective of quality work, but I don't know, I, I just, I, I don't like the idea of always just going with Beta. I mean, for a while, they were our de facto, or they're still our de facto.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, no, they, town engineer. So it just seems, on the face of it, it just seems like we're a little too.
Yeah, I agree.
Close to them.
I agree.
So I'd like, I guess, I'd like to have the opportunity to look at others. But like, the last time we did that, that one company came in twice as much.
Twice as much.
Needlessly.
Yeah.
So.
So I, I did after the last meeting, I let them know it was the amount that was a concern, so that they could provide a.
Or at least say, say, this is why we're, we're twice as much because of this, saying, because we put more hours on it, we have an extended level of expertise, so if they could give a little summary of why.
Of the cost.
But even still, if their, their answer was, we'll put more time into it, my question is why? Beta has given us a good quality product at half the time, why do you need twice as much time? What are you going to give me for that? And I, I, I'm just answering, like, I, I can't imagine what they could possibly say to justify doubling the cost. And I'm not, I know, I know the applicant's paying for it, but there's, they're looking to be a neighbor in our town, I don't want to spend their money needlessly, I want to be respectful that, you know, to this whole process, so. Beta's a great company, they, we've done well by them, I just would like to consider other opportunities.
Yeah, I agree with that, yeah.
Okay, yeah, we can continue to go out, the only, I know, though, for the 215 High Street, it would be the same section of the zoning bylaw, the OSRD, open space residential development, so Beta is.
Well-versed.
Yes, so they are, because they just went through it in the spring when we had the lodge, the lodge one. But we can, we can go out and do the same process.
Is it, is it, is it really a time-sensitive matter, or is it just the preference of the applicant that we do it earlier rather than later?
It's the preference of the applicant.
I can't see why it would be anything different than that, but.
Have they figured out some kind of affordable housing solution, or?
The applicant asks, I, because I told them what our process is, they review on a case-by-case basis. So we can stick with that, it sounds good.
Unless someone else differs from that.
What's that? Make a motion to adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please adjourn.